Call the meeting order, everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and earth and sky.
What in the, really? I don't know what that is.
We have things that we had to pay for first, sorry.
Definitely.
I think your number sixty-five.
No, I didn't. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Star Ledger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Roll call, please.
Mr. Pravilovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mr. Valero. Mr. Mandela.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on the agenda. Seeing none? Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
How's it going?
Good. I don't know, much better than you on that end. I think we got issues up here, Joe. Just saying.
Microphone issues.
It's all good.
Yes.
I can be heard, right? I don't need the little fuzzy thing? Okay. Okay, that's great. Committee reports.
But she's winded, so we need that.
Moving on, any committee reports?
Yes, I have two.
Go right ahead.
The first-
Just two?
Just two. I could do a couple extra. I could be very-
You guys are lucky, short meeting tonight. Let's go.
The first thing is I just wanted to congratulate everyone at the high school. They just recently completed the drama production of Drop Dead. It was a British farce, some of the folks are in the audience tonight. It was really a fun play and had the privilege of watching it twice. And the great thing about it was that as it unfolded, you thought it was gonna be one thing and then it turns out that it's entirely something different. So it was actually a really well-done production. So I was very, very impressed with that. The second thing was I attended the South End FSA and they had their big, one of their big charity events, The Wizards, at the high school. And I'm happy to report that they made three thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars off of the event. They netted and off the concession stand, they sold food up there as well. They made four hundred and twenty-five dollars. So it was very, very successful for them. They're really thrilled. South End's big fundraiser, if you want to mark the date for the board, is on June tenth. They're doing a casino night. June tenth is a casino night at the Brownstone. That's going to be their major fundraiser. It's their turn this year. And other than that, it's just typical things at the South End. They're doing, they need some more volunteers for hot lunch. They need some more volunteers for Ice Cream Wednesdays. And they've started their pre-k Saturdays where they have all the pre-k kids come in that are gonna be coming into the school, showing them what everything is like. So I'm gonna keep it short just because of Mr. Mandela.
Me? What did I do? I mean, it's not a comment about being winded.
You don't wanna be accused of being winded.
Winded, right, yes. So, but other than that, it was, it was, it was a, it was a good meeting.
Very nice. Anyone else? We do. At what point do we bring, I guess during committee meetings?
Great.
All right. We have our representative from the high school here this evening, hello.
Hi, so-
She has a fan club.
Wow.
Can we bring her more often? I mean, we have audience.
As if she wasn't nervous enough.
Right.
There's not that many updates at the high school, but tomorrow we're gonna have a full formal. It's Mardi Gras themed. It's gonna be from seven to nine-thirty, all grades are welcome. And it's just gonna be a fun night. Yeah, that's for that. On Friday, we're, for the National Honor Society, they're sponsoring the veterans. So everyone's gonna wear red, white, and blue and to help the wounded warriors. And then at the end of the month, on November thirtieth, we're gonna have an eighth grade orientation. And we're going to gather like the upcoming high schoolers, like the freshmen, the eighth graders now, and their parents to come to the auditorium. We're gonna give them a speech. I'm gonna introduce them and give them a taste of the high school. And then, I think it's the, I think it's the peer leaders. They're gonna tour them around and show them all the classes and the clubs. And a lot of the club representatives are gonna be there and show them what the high school's got. And that's really-
That's great.
It'll be awesome.
Yes.
We'll see you there, right, Jay? What?
I'm not from the peer leader club.
You're my, you'll be my special guest.
All right, moving on.
Awesome.
Okay. Board presentations this evening, a lot of trips planned. So we're just gonna go through what is on the agenda. The first one is the trip proposal to Italy and Mr. Orso will be giving us that presentation. And I imagine that's why a lot of you are here this evening.
Oh, I have to stay for just- So I am proposing a trip to Italy for the Italian III and IV students for this spring break, Spring Break 2018. We would be going to Venice, Florence, and Rome. So just a little bit of the important details, we'd be using Education First Tour Company. That is the same tour company that the Globetrotters use. So we have experience with the school in using this tour company. It's also come highly recommended to me from other teachers and other schools that have used this tour company. They're very reputable, great place. Again, we'll be trying to go for Spring Break 2018, which would be March thirtieth to April sixth. So we'd be going Friday to Friday. It'd be eight days with six full days in Italy. So the first day of the trip starts with when we depart from New York. We'd fly from New York to Milan and then at the conclusion of the trip, we'd fly from Rome back to New York. So just about the price, it's gonna cost three thousand three hundred and forty dollars per student. And that's a consolidated price, which means that we would probably be sharing our bus with another school. It just is a way to cut down on costs. If you want to do it privately, it would be about thirty-seven hundred dollars. And the only thing you're doing here is sharing a bus, basically, and going on tours with other students. I don't, I think that's fine, why not? But that price does include your round-trip airfare, as well as your three separate hotels. Since we're staying in three separate cities, three separate hotels. It includes two meals per day, it's your breakfast and dinner. Lunch would be on the kids, but it could be like a couple euro for a piece of pizza, so not a really big expense for lunch. Your ground transportation through cities, so, and the local guide. That says they're a full-time tour director. They would pick us up from the airport in Milan and stay with us through the drop-off at the airport in Rome. So we do have somebody with us to kinda help with the logistics. Those local tour guides, so when we go into each city and we take tours of different sites, you're given an actual local guide who can kinda provide even more insight and more of an authentic and cultural experience because they're from the area. It includes all your entry fees to your attractions. So for example, if you go into the Vatican, it will include, it already includes the price of the ticket to get in. If you want to go to the Colosseum, it includes that price. So realistically, what's coming out of pocket of the students once we're there is, like I said, maybe lunch or whatever. They personally would like to purchase or buy maybe a gelato, I would recommend it. Okay, but whatever they'd want. And also, it includes a twenty-four-hour emergency service, which is detailed in the itinerary, which I passed out. So it's just if a parent needed to contact us on tour, there is somebody who they can reach at all times. And then as far as payment is concerned, you need a ninety-five dollar deposit by December first and that secures your spot in the trip. And then they offer a couple payment plans. You can set up an automatic payment, will take money out of your account bi-monthly, twice monthly or once monthly. You would set that up. You could pay manually, which would be just creating your own timeline. And you could pay up until we would leave on the trip. And also, there's online fundraising. I know we're trying to go quicker than we typically would be. So the tour company will offer each student a link that they can send out to like family members and friends and they can donate right to their page to kinda cut down on their own personal costs. And then just a little overview of what we'd be doing. Our first stop would be to Venice. So some of the things that we'd get to see are the Grand Canal, Piazza San Marco, the Doge's Palace, Ponte Rialto, and of course, gotta go into Gondola, we're in Venice, right? Get that real experience there. Then we're going to Florence. So we'd go to Piazza delle Signoria, which is where the Duomo is. One of the ultimate stops there. We'd see the Academia and go see the David, the Ponte Vecchio, the Uffizi. And I also put into our tour a half-day trip to Pisa. So the students would also get the opportunity to go and see the Leaning Tower of Pisa. So just packing in even more for the kids. And then our last stop, of course, is Rome and perhaps the best of all. My, I used to live there, so it is one of my places that I specialize in. So the first thing we would see really is the Vatican. It's quite an experience. It also is technically going to a separate country, so it's like two countries in a week, right? It's pretty great. You'd also see the Colosseum, Roman Forum, Trevi Fountain, Spanish Steps. I mean, in Rome, the sights are endless. And then lastly, of course, I'm ideally taking twenty-four students from Italian III and IV. And right now, I have twenty-four students who have more or less committed to me that they would be ready to go. They, I gave them all the basic information, just kinda price and dates. They went home, talked to their parents, came back to me saying, you know, they said yes. So we're on the right track as far as numbers are concerned. And we would have three chaperones. Mr. Gallagher has signed on to be a chaperone already, if this works out, myself and Ms. Riley, who teaches English, however, she teaches all the seniors. So since most of our trip is seniors, it's more than half seniors, it's great because she knows all the students are ready. And then the only thing is enrollment would have to start being opened by the fifteenth. Because we are pushing for this spring break, we are on a shorter timeline. So the tour company would need everybody's passport and information like that by the first, once they set the deposit, to make sure there's no glitches in terms of getting everybody their airfare. But that is, that is my proposal.
Is anybody going?
So if you don't get twenty-four, how does that work? If you don't-
I mean, I feel like we-
You will.
Have twenty-four, but no matter what, the three chaperones that we have, we would just need eighteen kids in order for those three chaperones to be able to go. And once they put the deposit in, no matter what, if we get to twenty-four, their price stays the same.
Okay.
So, but I feel like-
How many would you need for a private bus, just out of curiosity?
Um, I think it's how much a bus holds.
Okay.
So the bus holds like fifty kids.
Fifty?
Need like fifty kids. And that's a lot of kids. So I think twenty-four, we've set at a pretty good number. I feel like it's an appropriate amount to take. We are going to bigger, more congested cities, so I feel like it's a good number for us to have.
Nice. And you're flying out of New York City?
Yes. So as far as airfare is concerned, they would let us know about three months prior to departure, which airport and airline we are flying from. They did tell me they only fly off of major airlines. So we would be on, I think maybe like United or Delta or all Italian, it is airline. But we are flying into Milan and out of Rome. So whichever was the most cost-effective. And they said up to one stop is a possibility.
And, and how do the kids get to the airport? Just by themselves?
I mean, because we'd be leaving Friday, we don't have school Friday because it would be Good Friday. So I mean, that's something that I would discuss. I'm not exactly sure in that moment, but either they'd all meet us in one location and like right in the beginning and then we'd all kinda check in together, or we could all meet from the school and go from there.
Okay.
That is something that I would figure out as we got to that point.
That's it.
That's great.
Sounds like fun.
Absolutely.
It's a great trip.
It's an awesome trip.
I did it a couple of years ago, exactly that, and it's beautiful.
Yeah, I mean, I've been to all these places already. I'm really, I'd be really excited to be able to take the kids there.
So you guys, when you go to the Vatican, will have your own private tour?
Yep.
So you go right to the front of the line and go right in and everything?
Yes, which is great. Because I've done it all ways and sitting on that line is terrible.
Yeah, it's awesome.
So it would be a kind of expressway ride in, which is great.
And you've, you've lived there, so it's-
I have it.
It's a totally different feel when you already know it.
Yes, exactly. So I feel like even for that, I can kinda take the kids on more, you know, what they might not see had they just gone on a regular trip there.
Awesome.
Very nice.
That's great, thank you.
Yes, great.
Ambitious, doing this so soon.
Yes.
Absolutely. So I figured what we do is we're gonna hear the next trip proposal to DC with Mr. Knopka and then we'll just take a quick break after that and then whoever needs to go and do their school things and, you know, their school tomorrow.
And lose our audience?
I know, I know. You're excited to actually see people, but, you know. So just kinda bear with us for a few.
No offense to you guys, but I'm stuck with you no matter what.
You're not going anywhere.
No.
Oh, I have to be here. I'm going on both these trips.
Is anyone actually here for the DC trip?
No.
One.
One.
They don't have a-
Well, let him talk.
All right, so I'm here to talk about Washington DC, our seventh consecutive annual trip, consisting of our AP United States History, AP Gopo, which is American Government Politics, as well as the AP Economics courses. Roughly, in those classes, right now, we don't, I don't have a total finalized number of students yet, but I'm supposed to know that by tomorrow. We're looking at estimated, it's gonna be right around thirty students, which is in line with what we've had over the past several years. Chaperones, staying consistent here is myself, Mr. Gallagher, and Mrs. Showmaker. Like I said, it's our seventh consecutive year. We've developed a good like working relationship. Given that there's a whole lot to see in Washington DC, it's good to have multiple chaperones to take students on like different points of interest that they might have while we're there. So the dates, we're looking at Friday, May eighteenth through Tuesday, May twenty-second. The way the AP exam schedule works, the AP Economics, they actually have an exam on that Friday morning, which is pretty much usually how it always falls. So our form of transportation to Washington, we've consistently stayed with Amtrak, which has served us well over the past several years. And the way that would work is me and Mrs. Showmaker would take my AP United States History, as well as my AP Government Politics on an early train down to Washington. Then once the economics exam is completed, which is, is a morning exam, Mr. Gallagher would meet up with those students at Nork Penn Station and they would go down via Amtrak that way. So transportation, once we get there, it's pretty convenient, the way it's set up. We're going with the same hotel we've used in the past. We take the Amtrak to Union Station in Washington, which then is a short metro ride, a few blocks to Layton Font Plaza, which takes us about one block away from the Holiday Inn Capitol, which is, you know, if we got our baggage, it's convenient to be close to the ultimate end location there. The estimated cost, and this is subject to slight variation depending on the final total for male and female students when it comes to the hotel room alignments. But for the most part, that's consistent, what the cost has been over the past several years. Hotel roughly three hundred and sixty-five, Amtrak a hundred dollars round trip, and a metro ticket to get you from Union Station to the hotel. That's all to be covered by students and chaperones. Yeah, and it doesn't include like the meals. That's oftentimes, we're on the fly, different groups are going to different places, seeing different points of interest and they stop for their own lunches. Usually, we have, we try to do group dinners at nighttime, but oftentimes, it's hard to get like a sit-down at a restaurant on a Friday night with like thirty students. So then, even then, we go to like different points of food interests and one of the chaperones is usually accompanying all of that also. So where is this hotel, why we stay there? It's very close to the, to the National Mall there, which is walking distance to just about all of the sights to see in, in Washington DC there. That saves on the overall cost of the trip if, if we don't have to like take the train or a bus to and fro, like every single location there. We do do a lot of walking. Occasionally, we, we allow them to take the metro and we're going to Arlington National Cemetery, which is kind of a hike. But for the most part, we stay on foot for the entire time. The agenda typically, what we've done in the past, is we have certain fixed items. Like I said, there's a whole lot to do and see in Washington DC. We've been there six years in a row and I still don't think I've seen everything, although I try to find something new every single time I go there. But generally, we go see the White House. And that's a tour of the White House, it's dependent on like whether or not we can get in or not, which you have to apply for, usually six months in advance. So we're working on that right now. Congressman Frayling Heisen has been great to us in the past, every single year. We're in his office and his family has a, a long history of politicians in Washington DC. There's great artifacts he's got hanging on his wall. And oftentimes, if he, if he's readily available when we're there, he more than welcome, like come on in and they'll talk to us for a little while. And if he's not available, his staff has been very good in the past, giving a little talk about the congressman and his history and also showing us around the Capitol. Senator Booker, once he became like a vice presidential candidate, kinda stopped returning our phone calls. But last year, Senator Menendez was, he came up pretty clutch getting us tickets into the Senate Gallery when Booker wasn't available. Arlington National Cemetery, that's one of the, I don't know, the big highlights of Washington DC, which I look forward to and I never get tired of seeing when I'm there. That includes like the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, the Changing of the Guard. If, if no one's seen that before in their life, it's something I think definitely worthwhile seeing. Of course, all the monuments, memorials, the National Archives, Library of Congress, and then there's like a million different museums, which of course is like student interest. One chaperone will take one group where they wanna go and the others will take a different direction. So I've, I've thrown in a couple of the highlights and some pictures from the past. Like the World War II Memorial and all the war memorials, we, we learn about it in the classroom. And I think a lot of time, young kids in, in the high school level, even at the high school level, definitely before high school, it's something they talk about and they learn about in the past. But then you go there and you see this and you go like the Vietnam Memorial, you read the names on the wall and it's, it's kind of making it a little bit more personal. Oftentimes, when you're at these memorials, you'll run into veterans, some even World War II, who are there, still around. Every, every time we go there, I feel like we, we run into the honor flights, which is veterans typically of World War II who are terminally ill. And they've got this whole charity program to actually like send them to Washington DC free of charge. And they go there and they can like see these memorials that were erected in their honor for what they did. And it's something to experience every time I'm there, just looking at it during the nighttime, staring into the, I don't know, the fountains there, it's still pretty cool. And I'm, again, it's something I look forward to every single year, even it's my seventh year in a row. It doesn't tire on me. The Marine Corps War Memorial, the Iwo Jima Memorial, another, I don't know, great statue, great to see at night. The Vietnam Wall. And again, like just the names, the extensive list of names and they go by year and it's, it, I don't know. It gets me every time I look at it, and again, I've seen it so many times now. But I still remember the first time I was in Washington, which was, I was actually an eighth grader. And my school principal at that point in time was a Vietnam War veteran. And I still remember him like pulling me and like a couple of kids aside and like, I knew that guy, I knew that guy. And that's, that's powerful. Again, it's one thing to talk about in the classroom, to read it in the books, but to go there and maybe like run into somebody who was there, a part of it, it makes it that much, I don't know, as far as a learning experience, another thing, gets me every time. The Arlington National Cemetery, this is the Eternal Flame, John F. Kennedy, Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, rain or shine, those guys are out there. Again, and all the weather elements, and if you haven't seen that done, it's pretty incredible, those guys, how robotic they are in, in their service. Inside the White House, again, it's, it's kinda tough and it's dependent on what else is going on, where the groups are trying to get a tour in the White House. And we've been in there a few years in a row now. I think the bottom right corner there is me smiling like a little child because they actually like let out like the first dogs and I got to pet them, that was pretty cool. Yeah. But again, like you're standing in the White House, the history that's been there, the people of like, those, those are the chairs that like very important people have sat in. And it's kinda cool to be in that position. US Capitol, top right there, that's actually Congressman Frayling Heisen's office and you can see some of the artifacts on the wall. That's one of his staffers who is like giving a, I don't know, a talk about all the things that are on the wall, answering questions for the kids, they're really great with that. From time to time, it's under construction, that's what the scaffolding is on the bottom left there. I think when they had the earthquake a few years back, it kind of messed it up, but. Supreme Court, another point of interest, was a political hot topic in the last election. You can go inside and there's usually a lecture every day that if a court is not actually in session because you can actually sit in the, the chamber where like the Supreme Court is and they'll talk about what's going on in the court. And then they'll open up to questions, like what's going on. It can be even personal questions, like I saw this Supreme Court Justice kinda does this and they'll give you like personal insight about what's going on because for the most part, you can't get in there and, and see all the cases. I mean, who does? But it's pretty cool to be able to do that. The Washington Monument, that's pretty cool, go up to the top and kinda see from the bird's eye view there. Unfortunately, that's closed, I think, till like next spring though, because they're, they're fixing the elevator. But we've done that in the past. Lincoln Memorial, famous. A lot of famous stuff going there, like the I Had a Dream Speech of Martin Luther King. There's an actual block on the steps there, you can like stand where Martin Luther King gave his speech. And again, connecting the history and being right there and looking out and imagining what it would be like to be there. It's pretty cool. Jefferson Memorial. The night tour, it's become, yeah, a pop, a popular itinerary item of the trip. I take the kids on a walk at night when all the tourists are, for the most part, gone and gone to sleep. And it's another thing to see at nighttime. I think, I like it more at night, actually. Like the reflecting pool and all the lights, it's, it's pretty cool. Boy, we walk a lot and they get really tired and they have to get up the next morning and they're grumpy, but they're glad they did it in the end. And they come back and tell me a few years down the road that it was like one of the best things they ever done in high school. One year, we got to see the, the silent drill platoon, which are pretty incredible. Those guys, you wanna talk about robots flipping the, the guns around and marching on, on point, like you can't tell a difference, they're, they're all, it's like synchronized, it's amazing. Yeah, that's all I got.
Great.
I don't have any questions because we okay it every year and it's the same cool trip every year.
I'm doing it for the audience on, on my-
No, I think this is great. I think it's a great experience for, for the kids to, to get to go and do this and see everything that they get to see. DC's an amazing place.
That firsthand, you know, actually standing where something actually went on, it's just, you know. And looking at the names, yeah.
Right.
That's intense.
Yeah, I know, it's pretty amazing. Thank you, thank you for making the media, we totally appreciate it. So we're gonna take just like a two-second break, more for you, not for us. So you can go if you wanna go and it's okay to go and we, we really think you're gonna go.
Or you could stay.
And what we're also gonna do is, since the Italy trip needs to be approved before November, or by November fifteenth and our meeting isn't until November twenty-first, if it's okay with everybody, we'll put it on the agenda today and we'll go ahead and approve it so the process can kinda get started.
Good. Do we do that before they leave or after they leave?
Oh, after, during.
Yeah, you can go, trust me, we're gonna do it, it's gonna be fine.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. Two-second break.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Nice job, you guys were fabulous in this show, fabulous, fabulous.
Two.
Thank you.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
Is that gonna make a difference?
Nice job, Coach.
Are you here for support? By times, absolutely.
Good night. Good job, Coach. Nice job. Good jobs. All good, off you go. Definitely. Round 'em up.
There you go.
At this point, it's up to, you know. Get it together and get your, get your roster of kids.
Wow, how did you get pushed aside? You do.
Night.
Everybody does it, you should, how come?
I don't know.
I'm getting killed tonight.
Tell us enough, don't worry, you don't need to give us any more information.
I always have to look behind the computer to see if she's here. She's always looking behind the computer.
All right, we're moving on.
Yes.
Five minutes, ready, set, go.
Really?
Do it.
Five minutes?
Do it.
No.
I don't think it's possible.
Anything's possible.
So Mr. DeVita, you're gonna add this Italy trip somewhere, right?
What would that fall on, they're just signing our name today?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That would be personnel, wouldn't it? No.[1744.76]
I don't think so, would it be under
Wouldn't be under, uh, S?
Just tell us, we don't have to guess.
How do you personnel know? We approve everything else on the personnel, S sixteen?
I think it's like an S eighteen.
S eighteen?
S eighteen.
Okay, and that would, is that a new?
S fifteen, so just do
Other?
Well, wait a minute.
Motion to approve on first reading.
Because I'm reading. Because we need to make it official and s- have the board okay it, before they go ahead and open it, and lets the kids like register for it. I think it's just better that we
Because otherwise, we're not back here till the twenty-first, right?
Right, exactly.
And then it's Thanksgiving and Christmas and
So Motion to approve upon first reading the trip to Italy during spring break?
I'm just here for the ten o'clock show.
Ten o'clock? We are not.
Not my fault, yeah.
Approve on first reading the Cedar Grove High School International Tour Proposal to Venice, Florence, and Rome on March thirtieth.
Oh, my gosh.
April sixth.
I mean, geez, why don't we just have Mr. Featherman read some policies too while we're at it?
Rome. That's three, twenty, eighteen, four, six.
Why couldn't you just read it off of his paper?
And that's
You're down, you just used up your minutes.
So that was S eighteen, S nineteen will be the policy readings?
Go. Go.
The Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary can have a motion for, uh, under minutes, B one through B three.
So moved. Second.
B one is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. B two is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of October. And B three is a motion to approve the Board Secretary's certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education. Any discussion?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B four through B seven?
So moved.
Second.
B four is a motion to approve the location agreement with New York University to School of Arts in the Cedar Grove Board of Education. B five is a motion to approve joining the National Cooperative, Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. B six is a motion to approve joining the inter-local purchasing system. And B seven is a motion to accept a donation from Investors Bank in the amount of five hundred dollars. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S one through S fifteen?
So moved.
Second.
S one is a motion to a- affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from November seventh, two thousand seventeen. S two is a motion to approve the submission of the two thousand seventeen-eighteen Statement of Assurance to the New Jersey Department of Education, as per the New Jersey Quality Single Accountability Continuum, or NJQSAC. S three is a motion to approve the resignation of Amy Soraco, high school Spanish teacher, effective December fifteenth, two thousand seventeen. S four is a motion to approve the affiliation agreement between the Cedar Grove District and Caldwell University regarding liability insurance. S five is a motion to approve Jackie Van Natten for morning and after-school supplemental instruction. S six is a motion to retroactively approve Susan Cassell, Cedar Grove Memorial Middle School Math Teacher, maternity leave replacement. S seven is a motion to appoint the following staff in accordance with the state emergent hiring procedures. S eight is a motion to retroactively approve Katie Hanlon, athletic trainer, to do CPR at the rate listed. S nine is a motion to re- reimburse, sorry, the following school-based volunteers for fingerprinting expenses. S ten is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S eleven is a motion to approve the following substitute teachers for the seventeen-eighteen school year at the rate listed. S twelve is a motion to approve the following stipends for coaching positions. S thirteen is a motion to approve Brian Dorflower as a volunteer assistant coach for the boys' basketball for the seventeen-eighteen school year. S fourteen is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S fifteen is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S sixteen?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
S, S sixteen is a motion to approve the following staff members for curriculum writing during the seventeen-eighteen school year. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S seventeen, and then S eighteen is just gonna be under a different heading?
Yeah.
Okay, S seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
S seventeen is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education students as recommended by the Director of Special Services for the seventeen-eighteen school year. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under other, I have a motion for S eighteen.
So moved.
Second.
S eighteen is a motion to approve upon first reading the Cedar Grove Inter- International Trip Proposal to Venice, Florence, and Rome, um, from March twentieth, two thousand eighteen, to April sixth, two thousand eighteen. Oh, I'm sorry, March thirtieth, sorry, they're not going for that long a period of time. Uh, any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mr. Mandala.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes.
Joe, how we do?
The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none, announcement of future meetings, November twenty-first, here, eight PM. December fifth, here, eight PM. I'm not gonna bother saying anything else, because everybody wants to get out of here, with the exception of, most of us attended the New Jersey School Board's, um, Association Workshop. I guess it was almost two weeks ago in Atlantic City.